Are you trying, are you trying to talk to them? See if they can, do you see if they can hear you?
There's, there's quite an echo, but I mean, I can hear, but it's, it feels like you're in a warehouse.
How about now?
It's a little better. Thanks.
Can you guys talk to them tested? Can someone, can you talk to them, see if it works on them, send?
It sounds as if somebody's speaking directly into a microphone and that is much, much better. Did you get it?
Okay, let's try one more time. That's all right.
Okay. Now I have nothing. Okay, try it again.
No, I couldn't, I guess they couldn't hear you. They didn't respond, so I guess.
Try it again.
Shannon, can you talk to us?
Sure. I can whisper to you. Is that any better?
Okay, I'll call this board work session for January 16th, 2025 to order and turn it over to Dr. Benau.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our board work session. We're gonna be, let's call it like an initial data review and for tonight's purpose, we're gonna be doing a higher level overview and looking at our LPGD, LPGT data. You remember LPGT stands for longitudinal performance growth targets. There are five longitudinal performance growth targets. There are five that we are measured by at the state level and that is our regular attender data, our third grade reading proficiency rates, ninth grade on track to graduation, on time graduate, sorry, yeah, on time graduation, and then our five-year completion rates. And just a quick thing on regular attender, that is defined as kids who attend 90% or more of their enrolled days and that is measured from their start, their start date until May 1st. So that's how that metric is measured. So it's 90% of the days that they're enrolled. So if they don't start school till October 15th, it's 90% of the days that they attend school between November 15th and May 1st. That's how that student would be measured and that's how regular attender data is measured. Some of the things I wanna highlight just from off the start and also celebrate is some of the targets that we hit this past year. We did hit our regular attender target and we also hit our ninth grade on track targets. Our, I also wanna point out, and you'll see in the slides, our on-time graduation rates and five-year completion rates are still embargoed and therefore they are not, those actuals are not available yet. So when you're looking at the data, you'll see those aren't, those numbers aren't there. It's because it's still embargoed and those have not been publicized yet. And then after we, we're gonna be using a protocol tonight called the Atlas Protocol. Our principals and myself and our leadership team have used the Atlas Protocol multiple times and we're very familiar with it. But it's a protocol that we use when we're looking at data and how to examine data and talk about it. So we're gonna be using that protocol tonight to look at data and talk about it. And after we process that, Shannon's gonna talk a little bit about how this data is informing our integrated guidance. This is an integrated guidance planning year and we will be submitting our plan later this year. And then lastly, I've asked principals to share a little bit about their individual school data. They've had an opportunity to see some individual school data that you all haven't seen yet, but that you're gonna see after I send it, I'll be sending it out after the work session, probably tomorrow to all of you. And I've asked them to think about some questions as they were looking at their individual school data. So that's kind of the agenda for tonight and the process that we're gonna follow. And when we think about data and just the purpose of why, like, why do we look at data and what are we doing with it? The purpose of doing an overview and analysis of achievement data is to gain insights into student learning progress. It helps us to identify areas of strength and areas for growth and use that information to make informed decisions about instruction, interventions, and curriculum adjustments that ultimately hopefully lead to improved overall academic achievement of our students. So, to get started, and I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure Principal Vieira will be here. He's just running a few minutes late. Take him home real quick. So he'll be here shortly. And then we do have some folks joining us online. Our friends from our intensive program team, we have Julie, our intensive program point person, and we have Ally Ivy, who you all know, Sarah Rosman, she's our teaching and learning steward for the intensive program. CJ's there, prevention and intervention, Shannon, our TLA director, and then Stephanie, our communication instructor. Okay, so we're gonna get started in looking at the data and so you're gonna be looking at the different data and as you're looking at it, you can take a little time to look at it before you start to answer. But in round one, we're just gonna describe the data that we're seeing and so the questions to think about are what do you see or notice, or what patterns do you notice within the data? And you can use statements such as I noticed or I observe. And you can say, if you're looking at a specific set of data, you can say, I notice third grade reading proficiency rates have gone down or have gone up. So you're just only doing observations right now. What do you notice or observe about the data? Okay? And when you want to say something, just make sure you use the microphone. I do have friends that are capturing what we're talking about on a spreadsheet and they're taking notes for us. Okay? So first is just what do you notice or what do you observe? Okay. Anything anybody wants to say that they notice or observe?
Across the board, all, all focal groups are down in terms of regular attenders, like post-COVID, but are also rebounding. They're like all going down, but all also coming back up slowly.
I noticed that, is that on?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're doing something really right with our bilingual and our ever English learners and our students with disability. And there's a little bit of something, I don't know if not doing it right is the right word, but with our talented and gifted, that's interesting that it was really up there and then.
On regular attenders or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, regular.
Do we, do we wanna stick to attendance for a while or jump, jump all around?
Another thing I noticed is that the sped rates at all sites for regular attenders is down below all students for 23, 24. So all sped students attend less than the whole school population.
I noticed that the regular attenders for the elementary schools, if you look at the English learners, that they are on an upward trend in all of the, in all of the elementary schools. It looks like at the high school and middle school as well.
I notice on regular attendees gender that the coming back, especially this last year, of the males are better than the females and I, I would, I would expect it to be the opposite of that and I'm wondering why. I don't know if you want me to go there. I didn't think so.
You're only noticing and observing.
Okay. Boo.
It should be on, it should be on. Are you done?
I, I notice on our third grade reading under gender that our female students are outperforming our male students.
And like, it doesn't have numbers, but the males from '08, or sorry, 2018, 19 to 23, 24, like the scores have, the passing rate's gone down by half almost, it looks like.
I was noticing that our focal groups for regular attenders, this, there really doesn't seem to be a significant difference among the race and ethnicity groups. However, the post-COVID attendance rates are clearly lower as significantly as well as like looking at the homeless population. Post, pre-COVID versus post-COVID is significantly lower. So I'm sure that the lack of services really affected that group significantly and, but it's with the bilingual group and the ever English learners, their attendance is better. I was noticing too that our non-binary group is the lowest attending group. And then interesting, Innovations Academy, our special ed students are attending at higher rates than the gen ed population.
I would just add to what Donna just said about the regular attenders, students on IEPs attending at higher rates than all students at, at Innovations. All the other schools are the opposite where regular attenders, all students have a higher percentage than those that are on IEPs or on an IEP.
I noticed on ELA achievement at Chenothe Elementary, our Hispanic Latino students are outperforming our white students, which is not the case for all of our other schools.
Something I noticed with third grade reading, looking at our baseline target for all students out to 27, 28 is that number is just higher than the current state average. So it's just kind of interesting to me.
I'm noticing that our ninth grade on track, that's focus groups of race and ethnicity, that the multiracial groups are the highest percentage of ninth grade on track. And significantly higher 23, 24 from the 2021 is the only data point before that.
I am noticing that on-time graduation, if we look at gender, our females are graduating on time at a higher rate than our males.
I have a question, Keston, a question? How's that? Is that better? Okay. I'm wondering, since it's not reflected here, what the variation is in population size for subgroups? Do they go as small as four students and as big as 200 students? So we're comparing side by side, poverty bilingual, ever-English learners, homeless, migrant, students with disabilities. In one of those subcategories, there may be one or two or three students. How small does it go? And in some of those categories, there might be 100 students or 200 students. And so the performance of each individual student plays less into how high the bar is. And I'm just kind of wondering about that as I interpret. Go math man.
Yeah, there is great variability in the end value for a lot of these. And the disaggregated graduation rate that I look at every year and have looked at for many years, a lot of those groups, when they reach a certain size, I think the threshold might even be 5%, they discard them from the total group. So some of them are very, very small. So when we're looking, I'm looking at them, you have to kind of discount certain ones that are very, very small.
They may be as small as 5% of the numbers.
They'll capture the number, they will capture the number. But if you look at a big, they call it the media cohort media file or whatever, they'll still have the subgroups there. But a lot of times when they report it on a state report card or whatever, they will, you know, discard that, just simply because the sample size or whatever, end value is very, very small.
Does anybody have any other noticings or wonderings? If not, we'll move to the next round.
I have another.
Go for it.
I notice that in ninth grade on track, third grade reading and attendance, the gap closing target for all focal group students was met for all three of them, showing that it's in green in each table.
Any other noticings or wondering, or observations? Okay, so round two is what we call like interpreting the data. So what does this data suggest? And you can use a sentence frame like this suggests that, and then finish that sentence. So what does this data suggest?
I would say district-wide, it suggests that we're starting to recover from COVID, especially around attendance. I mean, every area that I kind of look at, there's, I mean, three of the five of these targets are directly tied to the high school. Attendance includes the high school. And so everything tells me that we're coming back. And a lot of what we have in place, I feel, is working, but it's taken some time. Let's just say one more thing. This, maybe this is just an observation. I should have shared this earlier. I shared it with the admin team, and this might just be being a mathy guy. But all of these data points are binary, I guess binary, meaning they either did or they did not. It is not like a continuous number here. They either attended or they did not, you know? Or they either graduated on time or they did not. It doesn't take into account how well an individual kid attended, or how well kids graduated, or things like that. And so that's just, again, an observation, I guess.
On, I think this data suggests that around regular attender, the efforts that we have been putting into creating, welcoming school environments and focusing on the culture of our schools and building relationships with our students and families is working. And our regular attender data is increasing. And we're seeing more of our kids come to school every day, wanting to be at school.
I believe that when I look at the attendance rates and looking also at ninth grade on track and with the focal groups, is that there really isn't any group that is significantly performing less than another. And I feel like that speaks loudly to the focus on equity and inclusion. And there's a lot of effort there. Also, it's comforting to me to compare to our county, our counties, our state averages are really not significantly different than where we're landing. And that feels good to look at that as well. And I know nationally, this, these aren't just our problems, they're nationwide.
Go ahead, AJ.
Just looking at like Chenoweth's data and looking at for regular attenders and looking at English language learners and the Hispanic Latino population in terms of attendance this year, I think, I mean, I think it really suggests that those students feel welcome. As we grow the dual language program, we're, we have more staff that kind of represent the student body. And I think that's part of the culture and climate. And those are the two numbers of kids that are really showing up.
I did owe that. That was the, those were the two areas that I was looking at, specifically 23, 24. In previous, 21, 22, we can say that we are in fourth grade, DLI at this time. So we have a group of students last year who has had kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And you see the third grade data that has improved for third grade, both achievement ELA and as well as regular attenders. So I second that, AJ.
I notice on regular attenders between the elementary schools, that in the first category, the student groups, all students, I mean, all, Chenoweth and Colonel Wright are consistently gaining in their numbers, like students, there's a gain every year from 21, 22 to 23, 24. Colonel Wright, the same, but Dry Hollow, not. And I saw that in other categories, but I'm just looking at this one. So there's something going on in that particular year. And so this suggests that something negative was happening there, where the kids weren't showing up for one reason or another. That year, 22, 23.
I think looking at the whole set, this suggests that we need a data point between third grade reading and ninth grade on track, because we have accumulated enough data, at least when the embargo is lifted, to infer that ninth grade on track predicts, graduation rate predicts fifth grade completion rate. I mean, I guess obviously, but we don't have enough data to infer what does third grade reading achievement through line mean.
And in the other data sets that I'll share with you, you're going to get to take a look at much deeper level data by school and get to see like ELA achievement, math achievement, and kind of see that trajectory and the longitudinal data that we have. Anything else about what this data might suggest? Okay, then we'll move to round three. And round three, this is the last round, is implications. And so we want you to think about what does this data imply in terms of systems change needs across the district? And you can use the sentence frame, this implies that. So what does this all mean about systems change across the district and the needs across the district?
For the ELA achievement in the elementary schools, looking at the English learners category, it suggests to me that something different needs to be done with the system that's in place for our English learners and the way they're being served.
I would echo that, Autumn, that, you know, historically in North Wasco, we have a pullout model. And we've, we've been talking for about a year and a half of a more effective model for, for language acquisition, which is why we've had such a strong push with constructing meaning. But I think it indicates that we need to also revisit our, our district-wide programmatic model, while also ensuring that language acquisition is part of students' day, all day, every day, not just when they are working with an ELD teacher.
Looking at ELA achievement data and kind of when, like when we had a language arts curriculum adoption, like the numbers go down since then. So I think there's been a learning curve. The other thing that I think this suggests a little bit is that we, we need to change the way we're teaching, like, language arts. And I think we've like taken some steps in the right direction with elementary teachers participating in the science of reading. And so I think, hopefully, the next couple of years, we'll start to see the gains from that, from students who have participated in classrooms where teachers are science of reading trained.
I would add to that, AJ, that there has, we have to have ongoing support and training for teachers, like even those that have completed the Building a Strong Foundation in Literacy, which is the science of reading training. We can't just stop there. We have to continue to find ways to support professional learning for teachers so that we can provide kids with what they need. When, when we're looking at ninth grade on track, I think an implication is to dive a bit deeper into Innovations, just based on the significant gains that they've had with ninth grade on track. We can dig, dig in and, and hear more about what's, what's working and what's, what's, why those, the increase is so strong.
While I'll agree with Principal Evans that we are starting to recover from pandemic era, I think this data apply, implies, the regular attenders data implies, we still don't fully understand why it's taking a long time, and we have more work to do.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that, and especially as it relates to third grade reading proficiency, which is an indicator of later success for the student through their career all the way to graduation. We should not lose sight of the efforts that we are putting into regular attender and getting our kids to school, because if our kids aren't in school, we can't teach them. So we should not lose sight of those efforts. And to me, the data implies that we need to continue and double down on those efforts because the two kind of go hand in hand.
The ELA achievement is significantly lower at Innovations Academy than it is at all other schools. It's more consistent with the special ed ELA achievement. And I think that suggests that students that are having challenges and they're credit deficient and/or having major behavioral problems also, may also have some literacy challenges.
What would you say that implies for? What would you say that implies for the work at Innovations?
It implies that we have a lot of catching up to do, which we feel every day. And we definitely notice that the students have a hard time reading and writing. And it's one of their major challenges every day. So we have put a lot of effort in every content, every classroom to be writing complete sentences with appropriate punctuation and have it modeled on the board, just as you would see in an elementary school.
I think another implication is when we see the significant gap in ELA achievement. And while we are making efforts to turn that around at an elementary, at the starting at elementary, we still have a bunch of kids that are beyond early elementary that still don't have the skills that they need to be effective readers and writers. And so the implication there is that we have to to make a plan for how we're going to ensure that, yes, kids are going to continue to have access to quality grade level instruction while also recognizing that there is a gap and there are lots of holes in their learning. And what are we going to do so that we can fill that in while continuing forward with grade level standards?
Any last thoughts around implications? Okay. Then if there's no further comments, then I am going to turn the time over to Shannon, our Director of TLA, who's going to talk about integrated guidance and how this data and all this work informs our planning process.
Would you like me to share my screen or do you have it there in front of you?
Yeah, that'd be great. We have the presentation too, Shannon, but you can share your screen. That's fine.
Okay. All right. So this is the framework for integrated guidance. You probably, or those of you that were on the board, when we, this process came about two years ago, the hope was that all of these different programs and funding sources would come together so that strategies and outcomes would be aligned and not just have high school success over here and, you know, last year, early literacy successful district grant here, CTE there. But this is the framework for which all of those programs come together and identifies the common elements and the common goals. And so what we are doing this year is taking a look at, through our integrated planning process, we are looking at what was done previously. So in the application two years ago, what were some of the strategies? What were the outcomes? How, not necessarily boiling, going down to like nickel and dime of precisely how was this money spent? But big buckets of these funding pools, how were they spent in relation to what the goals are of each program? And so we brought together a team, much kind of similar, we modeled it off after the intensive program a little bit in the sense of, okay, we're going to have a team that is writing the application for integrated guidance. But then we're also going to pull together representation from across the school district so that we have a planning team that is reflective of our different populations, our focal groups, different programs that we have. And so this slide shows you who is on each of those teams. And it was really important that we had representation from across the district, but also of those focal groups, like I said. So this team over here, this planning team meets monthly, and this is the process that we're following. So this month, we're going to come back together and look at our needs. What is important that we find out so that we can then use that information and reflect on programs, strategies, and outcomes that we said we would do? Look at our data, especially the LPGTs, to think like, okay, so how did those programs impact the data? And then think about, okay, what else do we need to know in order to be able to, in order for this planning team to be able to make a recommendation to the team that will write the application? One example of that is we, the planning team went through a similar process that we just did with the Atlas Protocol and the LPGTs with the attendance data. And we were able to identify a bunch of questions, really specifically wanting more information about why certain focal groups have such low attendance. What are some of the barriers? I, the planning team doesn't know this yet, but one of the things that came up, a question that we had was, are students in walk zones less, do they have lower attendance rates than those that are in the busing zones? Thinking, one thing that specifically came up was, you know, we don't have sidewalks everywhere. And we have elementary students walking to school where there aren't sidewalks. And is that a barrier? And in fact, our wonderful data specialists, Dev Hannah and Monica Harmon, have really analyzed data for us and made it pretty eye-opening to see that actually students that are, especially elementary students in our walk zones, have better attendance than those that are outside of the walk zone. So that hypothesis that not having safe sidewalks to get to school was a barrier for attendance was actually proven wrong. But that's what we're doing in this needs analysis. We're identifying, what do we need to know? And we're actually working with our climate and culture toses and yows, actually more our yows than the CNC toses, to have some empathy interviews with students who are not attending and also families to find out what are the barriers? And so then we'll continue through this process. In February, the team will start to make recommendations. And then in March, I will present a draft of our integrated guidance application to you at the school board meeting on March 20. And at that point, we'll have some dialogue about potential revisions and other things to include or whatnot so that we can submit the final application to ODE by the end of April. Just coming back to the framework, one thing you'll notice here that is different from the previous framework is that the early literacy successful district grant is embedded into integrated guidance now. So when that first came out in last school year, it was its own entity, knowing that it was going to be a part of integrated guidance in this biennium. So the data that we have started to use that is informing our work are the LPGTs, just the three that are not embargoed still that are available. And eventually, we'll pull in all five of them. We'll also incorporate other local assessments. And also, we'll consider things like on track to to ELP, so the English Language Proficiency. We can look at the data there too, to see how are our English learners in terms of their progression to achieving proficiency in English. But for now, these are the LPGTs that we just looked at or what the team is also using. So that's a very brief overview of our process. Are there any questions or thoughts?
Board members, do you have any questions specifically about just the integrated guidance process and how we've been navigating and each month meeting and working through the process as we lead up to presenting a draft plan in March?
I will add one more thing. When we come back and look at the framework for integrated guidance, this has provided us with a structure for ensuring that all of these programs are more aligned and relate to our strategic plan and the intensive program as well. And so by being able to go through this process with all of these participants, it's certainly broadening the awareness of all the different things that we have going on across the district for these people, which I think is really beneficial. It's not just one or two people that know all the ins and outs of whatever program within integrated guidance, but all of these people are getting a much more thorough understanding of each of these programs.
All right. Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, thank you.
So now I wanted to give a little time to each principal to share a little bit about their school data that they've had an opportunity to look at over the past week or so. And there were some questions that I gave them to consider as they were thinking about their data and looking at it. And those were, you know, what do you want to celebrate about your school level data? What are you planning to do with this information? How are you thinking you might share this data with your staff and families? How will this data inform your school level systems, policies, and practices? How are you going to center focal groups when developing these practices? And what are some of the cultural shifts and system changes that are needed in order to meet the LPGT targets? So I will turn the time over to Principal Rundell to start off with Chenoweth.
So the things, I looked at a little bit of a larger data set that Dr. Bernal referenced that she'd be sharing with all of you after this. But I think the things we want to celebrate about Chenoweth are improved attendance rate over the last three years. I mean, really, students who are economically disadvantaged and the ELL students and Hispanic Latino student population. Some overall academic growth. Students with disabilities showed some growth in mathematics. Migrant students like kind of demonstrated some steady progress in multiple areas. And then, this wasn't any of the data sets, but I think it's something that should be celebrated. Just, we had a large number of students who exited ELD services. So we had 11 students last, or that are current students exit ELD services and 14 total last year. This was a 50% increase from previous years. And I think that's directly related to the work teachers have been doing around constructing meaning, looking at more inclusive language practices, the dual language program. And then kind of we're slowly trying to work towards an integrated ELD model. And that's a model that students are not just pulled out of classrooms, but they're co-planning with the ELD teachers and having a chance to practice academic language all day. Areas where we plan to kind of share this information, we have IPT teams where we look at individual students and kind of this data is super helpful for kind of figuring out where individual students fall, looking to
Sorry, real quick. Just IPT is intervention progress teams. Every school has an intervention progress team where they meet regularly to talk about students who are needing interventions and support in their academic progress and/or behavioral growth.
Yeah, so we have large teams that meet, which are like title, ELD, sped, speech, counseling, all kind of meet and problem solve around individual students. And then really kind of using this information to figure out where those attendance gaps are for specific groups, kind of like students with disabilities that we talked about, and then male students. And then kind of just kind of sharing some of the success stories and looking at things that have contributed to improvement. So I feel like we have a really strong partnership with the ESD and we have a great migrant liaison in our building. And then I think our ELD team is phenomenal, working with teachers to co-plan. As far as how this data will inform our school level systems, our three building goals this year are attendance, ELA achievement, literacy, and then culture and climate. So really focusing on attendance interventions, we spent our last two staff PDs really kind of diving deep into student attendance and kind of looking not only like at the binary number like Kurt mentioned before, but really looking at like what's the story behind why that kid's not coming? And so we're looking for kind of more context than were they here, were they not here? And try and problem solve around some of those things. This year, we've kind of expanded our targeted interventions, so working on a walk to win model. So when is the intervention time in our day where students are either getting sped, speech, counseling, math, or Title I reading intervention? So that's like, that's kind of a big change for us this year, where primarily we had focused on reading intervention. And then really looking at professional development opportunities and kind of like Shannon was saying that we're training teachers in science of reading. And I think most teachers at the end of this school year at Chenoweth will be trained in the science of reading, but figuring out ways to continue to support them and kind of differentiate that training as we bring new staff on so they're up to speed. But so also teachers that have been in the building can continue to deepen their skills. And I think really the systems changes that need to happen are, we have to continue to move from being reactive and being proactive and kind of getting ahead of some of the things. Looking at prioritizing funding and staffing for programs that target these groups. And then really looking at aligning school values and policies with equity inclusion. So all students feel valued and supported. I think if we build a school that students feel comfortable being in, they'll show up. So, and then I think, oh, there's, the last slide is just kind of that growth in attendance that I feel like is really come around at Chenoweth in the last three years. And I think we're really shooting for 70% regular attenders this year. Like that's our goal as a building, so.
Thank you, Principal Rundell. Any questions for Principal Rundell?
I guess in thinking about the data, I know that the DLI program is embedded in the numbers. I get that. I'd be curious, do we have a mechanism to be able to look at that cohort? Because I guess, you know, as a cohort, you know, right now, the tip of that cohort is at fourth grade, right? As it continues to move, at some point, it seems like we as a district will have kind of this point in time where we need to decide, you know, will the DLI program exist as a singular strand in the school? Does it expand to all elementary? Does it expand just at the single elementary? And I think in my mind, having that data is going to be important to be able to see. You know, I think AJ had a good point earlier about, you know, the culture and just the sense of belonging. and just the sense of belonging in that school as a result of that program is changing. You see the parent involvement, you know, that dynamic is changing. I mean, they, they, as a parent group, I mean, facilitated a new playground for that school. Right? I mean, you can visually see some of the changes. And I think if we have the ability, I think it'd be great because, you know, we're going to be at a juncture at some point in terms of what are we doing? How does this look moving forward and possible expansion?
Yeah. And so the, in talking to Dr. Bernal about my, my individual goals as an administrator, like that's, I'm setting my goals again around third grade this year, but I do want to track that fourth grade cohort because last year was the first year that we had a cohort where it was two English classes and one dual language classing, class taking the state assessment. So I, I do want to follow that cohort and kind of see where are they as fifth graders? Cause I do think that's really important. And I like, last year when I was setting my goals, we had a conversation. I was like, a little nervous about this. This is the first time dual language is going to be in these numbers. And so I do want to see that growth over time. So it's something we're monitoring.
And as it relates to just future programming for DLI, we're actually meeting next week. Myself and the Chenoweth administration, the middle school admin, and as well as Innovations Academy is kind of all interconnected as we're thinking about the future of the program and what it's going to look like. And so we will be pulling in not only that data, but a lot of other data and planning for what that expansion might look like. And hopefully preparing some kind of draft plan to bring to the board for consideration. Okay, Principal Viera, you're next. Autumn, can you pass him a microphone?
Well then. Yeah, yeah. It's an, it's an important lead up question for me. There should have been a note card in front of me. I, you know, I'll, I'll, I struggled with this assignment as simple and straightforward as it was because I'm not, I'm not a celebrator. This is not a strength of mine. It's not how I, it's not how I navigate the world. I don't, I don't count my, my eggs until they're laying their own eggs. And so when I look at the data, I don't, I don't celebrate. I see that we have, I'd say maybe, maybe slow or stop the slump right now, but there's nowhere to go but up. And that's an exciting, that's an exciting prospect. I'd say functionally, what we can do with these numbers is look at the pieces. What we've been doing at Colonel Wright the last couple of years is look at the pieces that are easily accessible within, with, under our control, where we can make change. And that's always, that's always our goal is like, what can we actually affect? And, and that will give us sufficient quick rewards. So that gives us something to build off of. And we've done a lot of work around systems to try to bring everyone together and approaching these things the same way. We've also had to do a lot of work on getting, getting everyone on the same page in terms of understanding why things in our district are, are changing. Why do we have to have a new curriculum? Why have we made changes in our policy around student behavior and things like that? I think in fact, there hasn't been a big change. These are just natural cycles that schools go through. And they're landing at a time when, when we are experiencing a lot of societal change and strife. And so it's really hard to be like a human who's responsible for 20 to 30 other humans at any point in the day, who then is accountable to the 40 or so humans that are responsible for that human's general survival. We, we focus our, our conversation around data in situations where we can, where we can approach it in an actionable way. For us, that's a lot the same as what AJ was describing, which is those, those core teams that look at students whom the data identifies as struggling, whether it is specifically attendance related, whether it is specifically around their performance and their growth as, as an academic. And we assign and determine what is the best intervention for that student. I think at all schools this year in the elementaries, we've, we've made an effort, a concerted effort to expand the options for students to receive intervention when they're struggling by embracing a, a walk to model. There's a lot of ways to deal with students who are struggling. And one of the ways is by opening up the number of staff available to do instruction, breaking them into smaller groups and targeting the skillset that they most need in order to grow. Because at the same time, we're still responsible for making sure the kids are accessing the grade level learning. And that's kind of a really tricky juxtaposition. Like that's a really weird thing for teachers to do is like, you have to learn this thing that is above your skillset right now. And then I also have to get your skillset up and we also have to get to PE on time. So there's a lot going on. And that is one of those, one of those models that I think is a step in the right direction. Because it also, by all of us doing that across the schools, will allow those teachers to discuss what works and doesn't work and adjust. Cause I think that the data reliably shows us, and these are just the last few years, but reliably shows us that what we've been trying to do just hasn't been giving kids enough of what they need to, to make growth consistently. And that's not because people aren't working their butts off. It's because what we're doing just isn't quite working. It's not paying off in the way that it used to. And we're struggling to, to embrace that reality and make changes. The other piece that doesn't really show up in here, but is really relevant with data. I mean, I guess it shows up in the attendance, right? Kids are not coming to school consistently. And so our investment in the youth outreach workers this year with the funds that we received, our, our investment and opportunity to bring in culture and climate TOSSAs really ties into this work. When you look at attendance, when you look at performance, when you look at outcome, I mean, it doesn't matter what training you go to or what you read. It's all make kids feel welcome at school, right? And so then you say, well, okay, how do we do that? And they're like, yeah. Oh, okay. So we got to figure that out for ourselves. So we've invested in positions that we know are going to help us get, get a better understanding of, of how to make kids feel welcome at school, how to get them to be at school and how to get them to, to show, to show those gains. The other big piece that we've talked about as a leadership team and that we're rolling out in our elementary schools has to do with just general perception. That is also an initiative that is driven by our climate and culture TOSSAs. So they, they developed a survey for students in our K5 classrooms, asking them how, like just a, a series of questions about how they feel about being at school. We had our first round of data and they're getting ready to gather a second round of data. And so we can see if the work that they've been doing has led to any gains. And if not, also open the opportunity for more questions about what else we need to do and what other information we need to gain. We also have a couple of data points now in our elementary schools about around staff perception. And all of this kind of cross references with the actual hard and fast numbers around student attendance. What's interesting is that we, we are aware that there are difficulties for students being at school, but our belief in ourselves isn't always reflective of how often students actually show up or how comfortable students actually are at school, which I think is really interesting. I'm glad that we have a positive outlook around this issue, but it doesn't match up with the numbers of what we're seeing in terms of benefits for students. And then the other big thing, I mean, I don't know how big it is. I think the other effort that we're making is to try to help teachers embrace their, like their creative and passionate selves when it comes to instruction. There's a lot to cover in the material to get kids the exposure to content and vocabulary, to language and skills. But along the way, it can be difficult to balance doing all of that with also being passionate about what you're doing. And I think when we look back to educators in our lives who made an impact, they were passionate about whatever it was that they were doing. And so we've been working on encouraging and facilitating teachers to embrace both the, the scientific knowledge that they're gaining through training and also implementing and taking a risk with more engaging practices in their classrooms. So those guest speakers, those field trips, those projects, those more open-ended opportunities for students to, to get messy with an idea or with a project. And then, you know, for us sitting around this table, that comes down to resource allocation. And I'm sure Randy has, has been happy to share with you. We have so many resources, he doesn't know where to stick them. So, but being really mindful of the fact that sometimes a teacher's bright idea seems inaccessible, but actually is with very little financial cost. Embracing, I mean, all of us at this table write grants to, to help make, not just to keep the lights on, but specifically to get kids and teachers into situations where learning is more exciting and engaging. I think that that's going to have a huge, and this might be a philosophical position, but I think it's going to have a huge impact on students over the long term when they can, when they can think and look back on and refer to learning experiences that were highly engaging, that made sense to them. And that they are doing that together with their teachers. Those are, those are the words I have prepared.
Any questions for Principal Viera? Okay. Principal Lloyd, Dry Hollow.
Okay. Celebrations at Dry Hollow. One of the things we are like really proud of this year is our commitment to focusing on attendance. We've really put a lot of time and effort into that. And while it's only been half of a school year, we're seeing little pieces where, where that's, that's really having an effect. Just for one example, on our attendance, we reached out to a lot of families. In fact, 80 different families recently who were having struggles. Some of them through home visits with our youth outreach worker or our climate and culture TOSA. Some of them through phone calls, some of them through like Dry Hollow. We have postcards that we use. We reached out in a lot of different ways. And 40 of the 80 kids that we, our families that we were trying to reach have had 100% attendance since we got in touch with them. So just, and that, that's only been a few weeks, but it, that felt good. Like, okay, we, we made an impact. So that's one, one thing we're really celebrating is even the little growth there. And realizing that while this data might not be where we want it to be for ELA, like when we look at our third graders, one of the things we're trying to celebrate is just the focus on the opportunities we have for growth. Because there's always room for that. Like AJ, we're focusing on the same three big goals. Attendance, third grade, ELA, and then climate and culture. So we've put a lot of things in place as far as climate and culture goes as well through our TOSA. He's, he's kind of had a different, a different, it's a little different situation because he's somebody coming in new to our building that nobody knows. Right. He's new to the district. He's new to the state. And so he's kind of had an uphill battle. It's, it's taken him a while to really get into the good graces with the teachers. He's had to kind of earn his way in. And, and, and we're really starting to see teachers make connections with him and reach out and ask for his assistance with different things. So they're starting to trust, which is what we want to see. Data, the data that we have, we use a lot of the data in our, like Luke said, our IPT, the intervention progress team. We gather a lot of data, data based on teacher observation, based on assessments, diagnostics, behavior data, and come together with this large group of people. Our sped teacher, well, when we had one. Our climate and culture TOSA, our speech and language pathologists, our climate and culture, I said climate and culture TOSA, our ELA, ELL, sorry, teacher, our child development specialist. We don't have a counselor, but a child development specialist. And when we get all those brains together, we can usually come up with some pretty good interventions and based on the data. During our PLC and PD time, sharing some of that data. And just looking at ways that we can really analyze it and look at where do we want to focus? Where instructionally do we want to go with that data, especially during PLC time? And for instructional shifts, we're really working district wide as a team to incorporate more student agency and choice. And like, like Luke was saying, that just that cultivating that love for learning, not just with students, but with the teachers as well. I kind of like the touchy feely stuff. And so we've had some really good staff conversations that, that have had a lot of really exciting things coming from them, even if it involves tiers. But like in a good way, we have, we, we want our teachers to love what they do again. And the last, you know, since the pandemic, it's just been like this, a lot of roadblocks and a lot of things that are places where students and staff and families are struggling. And so to be able to talk about how, how we can love what we do again has been really powerful. And then, one of the, of my personal goals as a first year principal is to really reach out and have, and, and create partnerships in the community. And so we started doing that just with like, the very first thing that we did at our open house was have places from the community. We had, we had Haven, we had HUD, we had the library, just to name a few, the public library. Anyway, and parents were able to connect with different resources that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise had access to or realized that they could have access to. One of the things I'm really excited about is we have this new drama club at Dry Hollow. And I thought, how can we connect to the community using that? And so today we just got this really great news that the Civic is going to let us have a family night where the kids get to put on their play that will be in May. And so we'll make sure you guys get invited. So that, that's kind of a big, a big win for community. Just getting out into the community and showing them what's going on in the schools.
How did that come about? What was the connection, the bridge between Civic and you guys?
That is a great question. So when one of our CILAs, JD, JD Fearce, he's working on, he's leading the drama club. And he and I talked at the beginning and said, what, what's the goal for this drama club? What are we going to do this year? And our initial thought was we're going to try and manage it with like 20 kids. Well, we had 60 kids sign up. So then we had to bring in some parent volunteers. Anyway, through that conversation, we thought, end year result, what do we want for these kids? And he has a lot of background in theater. And so he wants to teach them some skills about being in front of an audience and a lot of skills that I know nothing about as far as drama and theater go. And then we said, what about, besides performing at school? What if we asked if somebody would let us perform out in the community? And today by chance, somebody from the Civic came in to ask me about a science guy that they're doing some community outreach and can we come into your school? And so I said, while you're here.
That's cool.
Yeah. And yes, he can come and can we have a family night? And she didn't even hesitate. She just said, absolutely. Let's do it.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's, that's great. You know, when you guys are all speaking, you know, there's this, you know, Luke is saying, you know, back a few years, things were working and now all those things are not. not working. And so that's his kind of like, I don't have a lot to celebrate, really, I don't think I do. And I don't really, I'm not a guy that does that, unless it's really happening. But, you know, you're also saying, Luke, that there's experimentation going on at my school, there's innovation, teachers are trying new things. So all of that are like sparks, but it's not manifesting yet, or it is, but it's flickering. And I just think that if you notice all the points where it's clicking, in the next couple of years, you're going to see some results you can celebrate. So that's just my thought there for all of you guys. I'm hearing this all the way through everything that's been said so far.
Thank you, great feedback. All right, we'll turn it over to our newest, our newbie, Principal Kilgore.
Yes, so you all just have the luxury of having a brand-new admin team at the middle school. And I guess, just to start, the one thing that really just I went to celebrate that is on the data end is just the potential that we have at the middle school and also this district. Every day that I'm here, I'm surprised by, in good ways. And I'm not a negative person, I could list so many things that I could celebrate about the middle school, but I know that tonight we're focusing on the data. So I really do have more than one thing that I could talk all night about celebrations in our building. But with the data and both admin being new, this is where we're starting. And what I mean by potential, and I don't mean this negatively, is there is only one way to go, and that's up. And there is a beauty in that. And if we can just keep our teachers from, you know, eating themselves alive and leaving and getting out of the business, because it has just been hard, and we could talk all night about that. But, you know, as we're out in the community talking about our buildings and talking about our staffs and just stressing the importance of keeping it positive, you know, please come into our building. We've had such a small handful of kind of bigger things happen, but it's so few when you think of the middle school on a daily basis, it's miniscule. And anyway, just so much potential, and that's the word that I'm walking away with more than anything. But the one celebration that we can have is improved attendance, and we all know if kids aren't here, we can't help them. But a real commitment from the new admin and then everything that's already been happening here as far as having face-to-face meetings and conversations with parents about attendance. We also left the end of last year and kind of started this year with a pilot program, really focusing on the goal of 80% attendance and making a connection to that with like the extracurricular activities. And it has been very successful, not without some bumps in the road and some opinions. And I think anytime we try something new and different, it's questioned, and that's fair. But we are seeing improvement with our attendance and just a general wanting to be at school. And then the focus on growth opportunities, you know, whether it's behaviorally, academically, socially, or emotionally. Currently, we're having face-to-face meetings, and I think it's 43 kids who have three or more Fs after trimester one. And so far, those meetings, you know, when you're new to a community, and the DOWS is a unique little place, this place is, and you're new to it and to the school on top of it, I don't know what I was expecting, but I just have been so pleased and relieved at the appreciation of the parents. You know, thank you so much for bothering to meet with us on this, what can we do? And, you know, we can offer some suggestions, yeah, let's try that. And just thanking us for partnering with them. We haven't had, we just did get started, so we haven't had a lot of them, but not one of them has been negative. And I think that's just such good news right there. So that's our celebration based on this data. As the building leader, what I plan to do with this information, kind of three main things that we really want to work on at the middle school, and that's creating and sustaining a culture of creativity in addressing attendance. And of course, achievement will come along with that for all of our students. Education has changed, our clients have changed, and we need to think innovatively and approach our students and their needs differently. And that's just how it has to be. I think you're exactly right, and I appreciate so much what you just said, there's flickers, and that's how it starts. And we, as educators, tend to be very hard on ourselves, and we're our own worst enemies, and we beat ourselves up. And it's hard, but the potential is there, and that's how it starts. So I'm excited about the future at the middle school and this district. The second thing that we want to do with the information that we have gotten from this data is to ensure a climate that meets student needs where they are and that are developmentally responsive and not reactive. And then, one thing that's really unique about the challenge of middle school, and I really appreciated your comment about kind of where's the middle data? And I think bringing IREDDI in is going to really be a place where we can, it's one, you know, one point, one data point, but it will be helpful to us as we move forward. But that third-grade reading scores, ninth-grade on track, graduation rates are absolutely, the middle school is the hub of both, because we go both directions. We certainly better be concerned about third-grade reading scores because they're going to be ours in two years. And obviously, wanting our eighth graders to leave us and do well and be ready to be successful in high school and to graduate. So the responsibility is huge. One of the things that, well, I think I'd touch on this here in a minute, but it's okay, I can repeat it. There's a, I think one of our biggest challenges in this community, and it's not unique to just the DOWS, but where there's this idea that kids have and parents have that middle school doesn't really matter, they have it in their mind that, oh, elementary, obviously, that's where you learn to read and write, like, it matters. High school definitely matters, you know, we're trying to graduate and do our thing. But I would argue, and we have this conversation with our kids every time we meet, these are like the most important years. You're taking everything that you've grown and learned in elementary school and really have the challenge of, okay, how can I take this to a much higher level of thinking and using these skills and this information? And then get ready and prepared for high school and pre-college. So that's our biggest, I would say honestly, our biggest challenge at the middle school is how do we get our families and our kids to realize and buy into it does matter, everything we're doing matters, your grades matter, your attendance matters? How will we use this data and share, or how will we share this data with staff and families? With staff, again, our IPT team, our PLCs that we meet every Wednesday, professional development, and our leadership team. And then how we're reaching out with families is we have our site council up and running. We also do weekly communications by each house, home in newsletter form, and communications through Parent Square, and then, of course, the face-to-face meetings that Mr. Data and I are really, really committing to. Building those relationships when you have two new admin, literally, I promise you're getting your money's worth, but literally, all we do is, but it's colossal task, is building those relationships with our kids and our staff and our families. It's a lot, but I just really, really think it's going to pay us off. I feel like, I'm always late every meeting, or, oh, God, I'm supposed to be somewhere, thank you for calling and reminding me, oh, that's, it's one already, I have a kid in my office, just a second, I'll get on. But I know it's going to pay us off, I can feel it already. So be patient with us and bear with us, I think it's going to be good. How will we use this data to inform systems and policies and focal groups? And I kind of, for us, it's really in five ways. Attendance interventions that are proactive, creative, and involve our parents, I think is really, really key for the middle school's success with attendance. Academic support, like our reading enrichment and development classes, and we're calling it READ, which is our reading intervention. And then we also made a shift already this school year, and we're calling it READ Plus, which is kind of those mid-kids, rather than having an elective, one of our English teachers is doing an intervention class as well, like, it's just needed. And so that's exciting, and having a staff willing to pivot in the middle of the school year is amazing and encouraging. So behavioral support, one of the things that's really critical at the middle school is our two counselors are phenomenal and so good at their jobs, and I cannot imagine trying to do our job without them. Being proactive and restorative rather than punitive with discipline and holding all of our students to really high expectations. Mental wellness of both of our students and our staff, some examples of that is working on our social-emotional learning lessons, and then also having things like those Wellness Wednesdays and just taking care of our staff and making sure that they're doing okay is really critical at all of our buildings, not just the middle school. And then also professional development that moves us beyond compliance and into instructional excellence. One of my goals as the principal is, we had a walk-through the other day with admin, and it was a really cool experience, because everyone comes in with such a different lens. And so Mr. Data and I, we broke off into groups, and there's, you know, some of our little friends that we know like to express their thoughts out loud on a continual basis, who were so good that day. Like, it's like, looking at them like, are you breathing over there, is everything okay? And what made me proud about it is I really felt like they wanted to look good for guests that were coming into the rooms for their teachers and for the school, and they're being raised that way. And it just made me so proud, on one hand. But then we also get back and having conversation about what we saw, and it's like a real, we're ready to shift now from our kids just sitting and being compliant to really focusing on instructional excellence and getting our classrooms up and moving and engaged. And yes, they were sitting, and they were being really good and being respectful and all of those things that we want them to do, but were they loving learning that day? Were we really seeing just passionate lessons and kids really engaged? And no, not so much. And that's just, that's not a criticism, it's just a reality that I feel like as the teachers and as the leader of instructional excellence, we're definitely in a place where we can now get to there. Because it hasn't been that way post-COVID for anyone, because it was just restructuring and getting everybody back into the system and behaving and being ready to learn. So I feel really good about where we're at and where we can move forward. And then also with the professional development and excellent teaching is the use of the curriculums that we have. We really do have some really good curriculum material, we're learning how to use it better. And that it's, I think, challenging, no matter where each kid is in the classroom, it's set up, especially our ELA, well, and math too. ELA especially, though, is just right there, ready, no matter where you are academically. And that's exciting, and it's exploratory, and it's relevant. And then the last one, what are some cultural shifts and system changes that are needed in order to meet the targets? One of our shifts is, this is what I was talking about, that making sure that our students feel valued and supported academically, emotionally, behaviorally, and socially by aligning our beliefs with our policy using an equity lens. And I do feel like we've done a really, really good job of that. Of course, we can always be better, but I'm proud of the work that we've done so far with that and the work that was done before we got here. Another shift is have creative and engaging lessons in our classrooms every day. And I really do mean that sincerely, like, well, are we not doing that? And we're not doing it good enough. And I think it's been for really good reasons, but we're really ready now to shift back to instructional excellence and really expect help and inspect what we expect as the leaders of instructional excellence. Another shift is student agency and moving past that deep-rooted idea that middle school doesn't matter, committing to family and community partnerships, which we have definitely done so far all year, and then practice restorative and not punitive discipline practices. Thank you for your time, any questions?
All right, Principal Evans.
And Mr. Data is an actual person, it's not like a personification of like, Data, you know, he's a person.
He is a data.
You weren't like saying, Mr. Data tells me.
Thanks for picking up on that.
I don't know, I thought it was, you were talking about that, this is kind of funny, that like, I wonder if anyone thinks like she's talking about, no, it's Shudy, anyway.
I was trying to be professional, Kurt.
I know. Okay, so I guess mine's a little bit different maybe than other, because this is a conversation about data, so that's what I guess centered around, the types of data. But before I go into that, I gave everyone this graph in here, this like, this little history, a story basically, the high school, this is the high school graduation rates all the way back to 2012, which is when I came to the high school as a VP. And it's kind of an interesting story, because if you remember what happened in 2012, that was following the recession. And I think over probably a three or four year, I added it up staff-wise one time over a three or four-year period, the high school staff, we went from three campuses to one, and we reduced by 30, about 34% staff, clear back, it's a long time ago. But so it just, those things have consequences, and a 59% graduation rate is the consequence of those things happening. And so then we move along, Nick and I became, Nick was a principal, I was VP, and we started to raise our graduation rate. And there were major, major systematic changes that took place back then, a lot of those are still in place now. Major overhaul took place, and we saw, you know, quick, very, very quick results from the standpoint of graduation. And then it's funny, then I look at, there was a little dip there around 1819, and what happened then was, well, there was a leadership change. And even though it was a fairly smooth leadership change from Nick to myself, there's always, in any system, there's going to be a hiccup. And then I get started, and we start chugging along, and we jump up to almost 93% graduation rate. And then, of course, the spring of 2020 hits where everything just goes into the toilet. And so now we are... And so now we are slowly inching our way back up. The very last number, that 85.9, that's not an actual real number at this point. That's like my, I guess, projected number. Yeah, the 2024 numbers are still embargoed, so that number probably shouldn't be on there. But I'm in these numbers constantly, just so you know. I mean, I'm in the 2025 data now, and it's, we haven't even hit graduation yet. But, so I kind of know where we're going to land on this. And so I feel good about 2024, it should be up. And I mean, my goal, just so you know, is really, we should be at 90%. There's no reason we should not be graduating 90%, at least 90% of our students on time. Okay? So just so you know, that's what my goal is every year. And so that's just a history lesson. And a lot of times, school board members ask me, hey, how can I help you? Well, the way a school board member could help me is because I, just because we all hear things and perception is sometimes people's reality, is know the big numbers of the district and especially the high school. Because high school graduation rate gets a lot of press, and so just kind of know what it is. Like, yeah, it's, this is what it is, not good or bad, but this is, this is where we're at, you know? And so that's what I would ask of you. Okay, the next page, what I did is here is, I don't know if this is meaningful or not, but when I'm, I'm maybe a little different in the sense I'm, I mean, I'm always involved in the data. The data that is presented to you today, for me, is probably two years old, because it's 2023 graduation data and attendance data and on track when it's happening. So like, right now, I'm immersed in the 2025 graduation data and look, you know, and all that, all that information. But kind of the three things that I'm doing with the data at the school level is disaggregating it, correlated, correlative data, and then I look at like predictive data. So disaggregated data, that's just when you get, I talked about the cohort media file, that's where we get all the subgroups, okay? And what that's telling me is who's, what particulars population of students are missing from a particular group, and what particulars group of students might be overly present, right? So if there might be a disproportionality, and let's say, if I look, if you walk down the hall and then you go into an advanced class, you should see the same population of students in that advanced class as you see in the hallway. I mean, it shouldn't be a different set of kids, right? It shouldn't be a bunch of wealthy kids that are all white or something, I don't know, that's what it used to be. And so it should look and be like everybody else. But look at discipline data, okay? We look at that constantly. You shouldn't have over-representation in your discipline data, and you find that out by disaggregating it, okay? We often will have an over-representation of boys being suspended. One time I was looking at our dress code data, and it was like nine to one girls to boys being dress coded, okay? So those are disproportionalsities that we're always looking at, and that's found by disaggregating it. I look at correlative data a lot, and what that is, is if we do, you know, two things, are they connected? Like, obviously, we're talking about attendance, that's why we care about attendance, because it's obviously correlates high with student achievement. And that's why that 90% mark is important, because things correlate. When you fall below that, there really isn't a big difference between a kid that attends 80% of the time versus 60% of the time, okay? There's not a lot of correlation, but there is a huge correlation when you start to hit that 90% mark. So that's why the state sets it at that. That's why we care about 90% attendance. And CTE classes, that's, there's a huge correlation between that particular type of class at a high school and graduation rate. Every year, it's 92, 95% of the kids that take a CTE class graduate on time. So we're always, that's why I, as a principal, have added CTE classes, support them. I am the self-proclaimed CTE coordinator at the building. That's not in other schools, that's passed off to other administrators or teachers. So it's that correlative stuff that tells me what I need to do more of to get success out of the kids. And when we're looking at attendance data, the thing that I know works is when you connect student, when students feel connected to the school, they tend to be more successful. And so the biggest subgroup for me that is always, I see learning gap or points of failure is my special education attendance data and graduation data. That's the group that I'm, work the hardest on work fixing. And so when Donna's reporting that her special ed population is attending better than other schools, it tells me, and she's got a 34 or 35% ed population, it tells me that they feel connected more in her program than they do in programs like mine, okay? So for me, so again, that's a correlative thing that I know works, and that's also why we, that's why sports even exists in the first place. I don't know if you guys think about why we have sports in high schools, but that's really why, connects the students to the school. So that's correlated. And then predictive data, that's why we have ninth grade on track there, because the things that happen at ninth grade are a predictor of what's going to happen down the road. I, you know, broken record about ninth grade algebra, and that is a really critical point, and if a student fails that in ninth grade, they, you know, it's only about a 20 to 30% chance that they're actually going to graduate on time. So I look a lot at that predictive stuff, that if this happens here in ninth grade, what's going to happen down the road? So it's similar to correlative data, but that's another focus. So anyway, so just, I guess I just thought I'd put that in there to tell all of you what I'm, the way my brain works when I'm looking at all this stuff. But going back down through the questions that we kind of all answered here, I guess, I don't know, maybe like Luke, I'm not super celebratory. It is, it, I mean, if you know something is, should work, and you implement it, then it does work, then you're like, yeah, that worked, I expected it to, right? We have CTE classes, we expect a good graduation rate, and it, so it works. So I'm not really celebrating the data so much, but they're just, some of it, most of it is affirming. My biggest, like I said, my biggest gap in most of all my data points is subgroup that I feel is the biggest challenge for me, it has been for many years, is just my special education group. They're just, they tend to be 10, sometimes 10 to 15 points behind other groups. Other subgroups are doing well, but that one, we've always struggled with. Like I said, this information, a lot of this information for me is not, like, this specific, I use this information a lot to make changes and adjustments, but this specific information is not new, I guess. I'm disaggregating this stuff now and, you know, for, for the class of 2025, okay? But this 2023 is not really necessarily new for me. I don't necessarily share this with families, I guess I don't put stuff out or say, hey, look at us. But as a staff and our teams and stuff, we're working in this information all the time. And I guess, you know, there aren't, there aren't large systematic changes that we're involved in right now or that I look at. I'm always trying to tweak, find little, get little hiccups and bumps in the road, things that we need to fix or tweak. But from a large systematic standpoint, I don't see anything in the data, aside from special education, that I see as really needing to fix right now. Because most of the data is favorable in the sense that we have exceeded, you know, in these three areas, those, those targets. And I feel like we're going to continue with the things that we have in place, okay? So I don't see any, any major, major changes coming forward, so. And that's it. And like I said, the focal group for me, like I said a couple times now, really special education, and I, and I feel like there's a lot, there's, I won't go into all the problems I feel, but there's staffing issues around special education. I mean, there's just regulatory things, nobody wants to do the job, and there's just administrative things that are, that are just set up around it that, that I don't know how to get around always. I don't always know how to get around them. Because I know it works, I know what needs to be done over here, but because of some barriers, just institutionalized barriers around that, I don't know how to always fix that. So that's probably, for me, the biggest group that I'm trying to work on, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Principal Evans?
So I have one. Do you see correlation between what you're investing in, in CTE classes in the high school, connecting that to the community college? Is there, are you seeing data that connects the, what they're learning in the high school, they want to transfer locally and work on those things in a different, in a better way, maybe? Or because there's more stuff there, they're investing in that? Do you see some correlation between that?
Like, after they take CT classes, did it continue on with those after high school?
Yeah. Maybe it worked both ways, but yeah, is there a correlation between the community college and the high school concerning CT and their investment in that in the future?
Yeah, we, yeah, more like alignment, I guess. Yeah, they're, they're involved, they're, the community college is a member of, it's called COPA, Central Organs Perkins Alliance. So us, our community college, and then down to the central, you know, it's, it's the High Desert ESD that is that.
Oh, okay.
And so that's a, I go there every, I guess, probably four times a year for a meeting. Central Oregon Community College is there. And so the, yeah, the school, the high schools and the college programs are pretty aligned. They have two, two program of study meetings a year, so like Robert Clark's, excuse me, manufacturing program at the college meets with Lynn Helyer, Lynn Helyer, who's my manufacturing teacher at the high school, at that program of study meeting. So there's a lot of alignment, I think is probably the word, between those, between those programs, yeah. There is, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And finally, Principal Schultes, Innovations Academy, take it away.
All right, I can see that we're all getting a little tired, so I always say that I don't necessarily have anything incredibly dissimilar to say. All of these strategies that all these, all of our schools and these amazing colleagues of mine, I feel like we're very aligned in our processes, and I think that that's a real strength right now for our administrative teams. I don't have a lot of longitudinal data to look at. This is the beginning of the third year of our program as it exists in the structure that it is now. And last year, we were able to obtain alternative school status, which I'm already starting to see some benefits of that, working with ODE for some other funding models and looking for some grants that are specific to all schools. So I think, you know, that's, that's a celebration to talk about. But also, you know, looking at the data, I kind of did a little, like, deep dive with our data specialist, Deb, and was looking at how many, most of our students that come into Innovations are already credit deficient, and they're already ninth grade, off track, and they're looking at possibly a five-year graduation plan. So the goal is, is to get them hope first and to understand what is it that they need, why, you know, welcome them back to school, help them form a new relationship with school that's going to listen to them. So it's really is like bringing forward that, that student-centered ideology of how, how do we approach an education path for them. So the biggest celebration is that we're being successful at this, you know, we're, we're graduating more students every year. The celebration that happens in our graduation ceremonies is, you know, families are like, I don't know how you did it, but yeah. These, these kids have a chance, and they feel valued in the community. So my goal as a principal of this program is to work closely with, obviously, we have a middle school as well, we also have an elementary school at the, with the virtual team, but is to work closely with, with the rest of the district to provide really an intervention, to be able to catch where the net, right? Where the, where the safety net and get them back either in their preferred school placement or graduating from Innovations, because it works for them. So looking at this data, it, we're, we're getting them, we're filling that gap with credit deficiencies, and it's working, and it's exciting. When I look at our attendance data, it is, it's very low, you know, it looks like 27% of our students are attending regularly. Hopefully, as we look at our, you know, this, this year's, it will be better. But one of the things that we're doing is we know that these students can't come to school for whatever reason, and finding out why, and then just working with them with grading policies and giving them projects to do, and allowing them to work outside of the classroom setting so that they can still gain credits and be successful. And the hybrid program with our virtual school and our in-person school is proving to be very effective in that realm of, of doing that. And I was explaining to Dr. Bernant, too, that I believe that some of our, our data may be skewed a bit, because I think I need to come up with ways to give them attendance for the work that they're doing and not necessarily, you know, that they're not showing up every day, but they're still engaging. So I maybe need to rethink how our attendance policies are reflecting the actual engagement of the students in the program. When I'm, you know, planning to do with the information is encourage my, my staff through professional development, you know, as we move forward and identify the barriers. So data is, is obviously very important, and, you know, very similar to what Kurt was explaining, is that we always have to be in that process of, of, of learning and looking and gaining that information on a daily basis. But sharing with staff and families, right now, we do share data with our site council, and it's been really, really eye-opening to get some parent perspectives and community input on, on what they feel their, this subgroup of students needs and how, how we can move forward. We definitely are discussing our ninth grade on track with our advisors in our staff meetings, and at the moment, we're working on creating advisory curriculum that meets the needs of our Innovations virtual students as well as our students that are in person. And I believe that we'll have some, some positive outcomes from that. And as everyone else has said, our, our school, our district-wide professional learning communities, where our teachers meeting and individualized, talking about individualized graduation pathways for our students. And, you know, thinking about, like, all I think about really is how I improve and change policies and practices to be flexible, to really meet the needs of these students. And we're discovering our own focal groups as we, you know, move past, past these, I'm just going to kind of skip to that, since we've talked about a lot of these other things. And a lot of the focal groups that we have aren't necessarily in the data. So I'd like to just touch on some of the ones that, that our team really feels are some of the biggest barriers, which are houselessness, pregnancy, parenting, food insecurities, addiction, being on probation for some kind of challenge with the law. And many of our students are employed, not because it's their dream job, but it's because there's helps, they're helping to support their household out of necessity. And all of these things are big barriers to their ability to have hope for themselves and to dream bigger for, for what their future looks like. So we're definitely working on creating replicable pathways so that we don't have to reinvent this every time, and that we have more of a general idea of, of, you know, creating some basic ways that students can get through. And then we can individualize that pathway, so it's less and less work the longer that we're doing this. And Kurt's definitely been very helpful in giving some insights on, on that going forward as well. And I think that the biggest cultural shifts and system, systems, sorry, I can't talk, changes that are needed to meet our targets is continuing to work in the restorative realm instead of punitive disciplinary actions. Because that's really what's forming new relationships and building some resilience and healing the, the students. One thing that I was talking to Dr. Bernant about this morning, too, and it's a goal, is that all of us are these individual strings trying to catch these students. And I'm working with the multi-agency teams to get a consistent release of information so that we can communicate and build a case. And we're like a case study of a student, to be able to really catch them and form a net. So my goal is to make a net, instead of us just being these little strings that people fall off of. So, so positive reinforcement. And it's just, that's been kind of challenging to shift that mindset, you know? I think many of us have grown up in a punitive environment, I did, you know? And it's just... And it's just remembering to find what's positive about what's happening in the moment, you know, and not locking people into a single story of something that they have done, even if it was, you know, an hour or two in a different class, you know, that maybe they're just having a bad day. So positive reinforcement. And student agency is really listening to the student. We're in the process of a special ed audit and I had an interview and I became very reflective on the process of when we are talking to a high school student about their special education plan and we have an IEP meeting. We oftentimes are still in the same process as if they weren't even in the room or they were a kindergartner and we're just talking about their education plan as if they don't have a part in it. And, and that's something I've been shifting in my meetings and being really mindful of the body language of a student when all of a sudden you're pointing out everything that is wrong with them. And they just sit there and deflate and, and crumble. And then you wonder why they don't want to participate in their special ed program, right? Or with their teacher. And I feel like it's one of those things to really work on. It's like, we just need to really listen to what does a student need? And especially as they're growing and moving forward, they, they can speak for themselves in that. And it's amazing what happens when we let the student begin to tell you what they need their education plan to look like. The CTE program and we have a wood shop. And we're sharing that with our Norcore program students that come up and they're integrated in with our Innovation students. And they don't know, really, I mean, maybe they do, they do if they're allowed to talk, they're allowed to talk about it, but no one like specifically tells them that they're actually youth that are at the Norcore facility. And it's, it's been really incredibly successful because they're focusing on life skills and different things that you can do, like how to fix a sink and how to maybe start a business making cutting boards or pens or something you could sell at a craft fair, you know, all these different, different things like that. And I think it is all about relevance, right? As you were saying, it's like connectedness to their, to their program, making the program relevant to them. And project-based learning that is across concepts, including co-teaching, is, is definitely helping us be successful. So one of the things that we do need is staffing and support, student support and for teacher retention because this is a hard job. These, small school model, first of all, is, is always challenging, the small high school, because the teachers have 10 different classes they teach throughout the year. And they all have to have, they all have a common prep at the end of the day because they don't have enough teachers to fill in the gap. So everyone is teaching the entire time students are on campus and, and they have their prep time after they leave. So that is a tiring day. But, let's see, I'm going to go back. Yeah, I think another thing too is our advisory system with Innovations Virtual Academy is they use, it's all the entire high school body together and they're co-teaching. And it's becoming exciting and an environment where students want to, to join every day. So every Monday through Thursday at 10 o'clock, we're getting about 55 high school students show up. And I think right now our numbers in the high school are probably around 100, 120, something like that. So, you know, about half are coming consistently and that's an improvement over maybe 25%. So, you know, attendance is definitely a big challenge, but you got to look at the wins. We're focused on place-based education right now and making school relevant to the entire student body and differentiating lessons. And, yeah, I think I covered it, so.
Any questions for Principal Schultes? Okay.
Hi, I have a question. So when your students graduate or are going to, do they have a goal to go on to college or trade school? I mean, do you have numbers that show that all this has panned out for something positive for them?
Now, that's a good question. I, I don't really have a formal data collection system for that, but they come back and they've been coming back and telling their stories of success.
Oh, good, because that would be nice to know.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's one of the harder things at high school. It's hard for, for, for both of the high schools to be able to collect that information. One of the things that we did in Lyle, which I really appreciated, was we invited all the seniors to come back and the next year and partnered them with the freshman class to come in and talk to them about their successes to help them form their goals for their high school experience. And I've thought that that would be a nice way, one, to collect data and two, to allow the students to come back in and celebrate with their peers their accomplishments and then share it to hopefully help others. So, but yeah, I have thought about that a lot too. How do we know? Yeah, we just know that they have a better chance, right? And many of them do have aspirations and we're definitely working towards giving them that goal and that's what helps them be able to accomplish like a lot of hard tasks because many of them are completing all of their high school credits in basically two years. That's, many of them are coming in more than a year deficient.
Go for it.
Sorry, Kurt, I have a question for you. So back when you said that you can tell when your ninth grades, graders aren't passing algebra, that they're going to struggle to finish high school? Isn't that what you said or?
Yeah, it's, there's, in fact, it was Eric, yesterday I was meeting with, sorry, I can't remember his last name. He's the, Eric Erickson, the coach.
X-Team, yep.
Yeah. And he cited a Gates Foundation study. That statistic is a pretty old statistic. I mean, it's been around, it's like just common knowledge for high school principals that if you don't pass algebra, that's like the gatekeeper class for everything, you know? And, and so anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so what I, my, my, my thought to that was, so that tells me then is if you're going into ninth grade to take algebra and you're not being able to pass it, somewhere along the line, the math or the reading part that sets you up to, to master or pass algebra has been lost in those years before going into ninth grade. So I'm just wondering on those children or students, I'm sorry, students that aren't passing, it would be interesting to see their back school history to figure out what happened, why they didn't get that little piece so that they could be successful through high school.
Yeah, and the, and the overall, and Eric and I were talking about this yesterday about just kind of more district-wide work that, because for, I would, I don't have this now, but you're, back in some prior years, we would hit see 35% failure rate at ninth grade, algebra. And my response was usually like, okay, either I expect the wrong thing or we're teaching something wrong down here. Because, because as soon as that happens, we just, everything goes into remediation and every, and, and all those kids that failed at, okay, guess what? Now they don't get an elective.
Right.
And guess what elective they don't get is CTE. And so it, it's just this domino effect of bad things that happen, okay? And so it's better now, we instituted like a three-term algebra and so most of the kids will take, just say you're doing it all, most one-credit classes are two terms.
Right.
Algebra at ninth grade is we do three terms. So there's still a significant failure rate, nine, 10%, but it's better. But it's, but it's a big deal and because it, it does. And what Eric was cited, I can remember, he just mentioned a Gates study around this very thing that was done a few years ago, which prompts me to go look it up then. But anyway, but it is a significant, and I've done our own studies on stuff and I've looked at kids because it's easy to poll, it's our own data. And, and, and it is about that. It's like a, you know, it, it's about a 20, 30% graduation rate from those kids that fail, that do not pass any math class, any ninth grade algebra class. And so it's a big deal. If they fail English as a ninth grader, it's far more catastrophic, but we don't have nearly the failure rate in English.
Oh, that's a plus.
But they don't not graduate because they failed PE, you know? I mean, that's just it. And so it's like you whittle this stuff down and you look at these graduates, it's, it's very, you just like start to pinpoint something. And that's really, and I'm not saying it because I'm a math guy or math teacher, but that's really what it is for me. And so there's a lot of focus at ninth grade for that, yeah.
But I'm just wondering if, if we see a, a student struggling, you know, fourth, fifth grade and math is just not their thing and they're going to struggle through middle school, then they hit ninth grade and it's a big F-bomb. I can see why you're not going to do well in school. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we should be trying to capture some of these lower scores earlier on so that we can try and, I know this is a big if, but prep them as they hit middle school so that when they hit ninth grade, that algebra may not be the reason they're not finishing school. It's just, it's just my thought. It's, I'm not saying, you know, we have to change the whole curriculum. But I know we're talking data. So I'm thinking if we're going to use data to try and make decisions and build programs and successes, some of these things that you called out are really important to figure out, how did that student get that far? And then all of a sudden, those four years are going to be a huge struggle.
And I think like our new math curriculum, like at the elementary level, is going, is going to address some of those, those things that, I think Shannon can talk about this more. She has lots more familiarity with iReady, but there's some built-in features to iReady that do some kind of like personalized intervening with areas that students are struggling in math. And I think that other, that walk to win model, like this is the first time at Chenoweth since I've been there, that we've like really looked at including math time as an intervention for students. And some, some teachers in their win block are doing three days of literacy, two days of math, where kids are rotating in stations. And so hopefully that will like kind of turn that tide because like our, our math state scores are also not great.
Yeah, I think I just would add, is that I'm loud, so it's probably fine. I, I would just add too, and it, because this is the exact conversation in these meetings that we're having with our, our kids that have three or more Fs is, one definite problem is that they are given every opportunity to have solid, good math skills. They're choosing not to do it and failing. And so our conversations with them is, it does matter. If you're actually learning it and you're failing the class, but I could give you a placement test and you can pass it, I'll get off your back. But then I think one of the things, and this is only one part of it, that our kids think, oh, well, when I get my freshman year of high school, when it matters, then I'm going to try because it, my grades matter. Then you have had three years of being lazy and not having those, those skills and it throws them for a loop. And then all of a sudden, so it's a combination of them not taking advantage of the learning that is, but they think they can just flip the switch and, oh, now that it matters and I care and all of a sudden I'm going to get good grades. And one thing that we've talked about that's so frustrating is, okay, so if that's the fact, what can we put into place that's not punitive to make our grades matter? Or, I mean, if you can show me proficiency that you know the math, amen. I don't care if it's the test or a project or, you know, like being creative that way, we can do a better job of, but just I, for the middle school's part of it, just that mindset is, is the biggest barrier because all of a sudden now I'm a freshman and I think I care, you don't have the skills and desire's not enough. So, I mean, and so if anybody has the answer to, to that, write a book and you can become a teacher.
Yeah.
And let me know. Because I feel like some of our ideas that we've talked about for years, I mean, this is nothing new for middle school. It, it has a punitive lens, you know, like, well, do you hold them back? Well, we know from research, that's not the answer. Do you, you know, it's just, it's just a conundrum, for sure. And I myself worked, so I had to tutor for this other, but I did finish on.
I got these. In high school, I figured it out eventually.
Okay. Okay. Any final closing thoughts, questions?
I have a thought. And that is, I really appreciate all of you guys and ladies. Just addressing all of this is very meaningful, especially after hearing the data. So this, this correlation between that, I think, really worked and I, I hope we can do this again next time.
That was like a perfect segue, John, because we are going to be talking about data again in April, which is going to give you plenty of time to really take that deep dive into this other data I'm going to provide you, where you're going to get to see like a breakdown of a lot of data and also gets to see the longitudinal data. And one thing like that I really want to say is this data that we looked at tonight, that doesn't tell the whole story. And there is a lot behind these numbers. And, you know, coming out of COVID, I think for many of us, almost felt like starting over. It's like we're starting like education all over again. And something else I will say is that we are doing as a team a lot of systems work and alignment work across the district. And systems change takes time, takes a lot of time. And so while we're all working hard to do this systems work and alignment work, we're not going to probably see the fruits of our effort yet. But there's a lot of, as John referred to, there's a lot of flickers happening across our schools in our district. And I think the work that we're doing is going to pay off over time and we are going to begin to see this upward trajectory of our achievement data and, and what's happening in our schools. And lastly, I just want to say like collectively as a team, we're doing a book study right now on a book called Street Data. And that really is the telling the story behind the numbers. And we know that a kid who maybe doesn't do very well on their state assessment, which is like this big thing that everyone's like, oh, that's how we measure success, collectively all of us, like we, that's not really how we think about success of our kids because that doesn't tell the whole story. And we know our kids as individuals and what they bring to the table and how they're doing on a day-to-day basis and really is about this idea of holism and relationality and that everything is connected and nothing can be separated. So when we think about the cognitive and the emotional and the physical and the spiritual of our kids, it's all interrelated. And we, our kids can't be successful like without all of those parts working synergistically together. And that's part of all the work that we're trying to do. So those are my closing thoughts. Yeah.
I mean, a lot of this stuff, like I said, and I hate to, I don't want to minimize graduation data, but in my mind, it's, it's really a measure of mediocrity. Because I, if you look at my, our, our students that take AP, we have 13 students that, that took AP exams last year and were recognized with, as AP scholars, which is the top 10% of people that take AP exams. And four of the students were recognized with, or three were recognized with distinction and that is the top 4% of people that take AP exams, okay? So our students have, they do remarkable things way beyond what, what we're looking at, remarkable things, okay? And so, I mean, I, this is important stuff for us, but if you, I mean, if you want like deeper stuff, more, I don't know, more positive stuff in some ways about what our students do. You know, we expect our students to get into Ivy League schools and they do. We expect them to be AP scholars and they do. And we accept, expect them to win state championships in sports and win national titles in robotics. And so anyway, there's just, I just wanted to kind of try to finish it with a positive, but there's a lot more to this than, than just this kind of sometimes dreary stuff.
And that's where my mind was going is that, you know, I can't remember, it might have been Principal Kilgore mentioned about meeting all the students where they're at and it made me think of, you know, we have a spectrum of kids to your point, right? Largely, tonight's conversation was focused on those that are performing below their grade level or needing help to kind of meet the rest of the student population. But we do have the other end of the spectrum and And, you know, I'm assuming this expanded data set may even show some of that in terms of just, you know, are we, for those students, it may be, you know, high performers or whatever we want to call them, you know, are we, it's not supports, but are we pushing them to be the best that they can be, right? And that to me is another support for those kiddos that, you know, maybe they fly by algebra and, you know, are they needing the calculus, you know, are they needing, you know, the extra push to kind of get them where they need to be? And, you know, we're not defining that, but, you know, that's where my, I guess, I'm leaving tonight kind of wondering, you know, what is that other end of the spectrum? What does that look like? What is that experience? Are there any things or takeaways from, you know, the successes of those students in that population that could have some benefit to the other end of the spectrum? So kind of that all-inclusive look of, you know, what is, and I think it goes back to like some of the, you know, profile of a Riverhawk graduate, right? What is that? And, you know, are we holistically doing that? Do we have all the supports that we need to bring those up that may be struggling? And for those on the other side, are we having what we have in our buildings to push them to be the best that they can be?
All right, again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and sharing all the great information. And with that, since it's late, I will adjourn this meeting.